I'm going to call this meeting of the Newington Board of Education to order on Wednesday, September 12, 2018 at 7:00 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentation of awards proclamation, so we'll move on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. And the phone number to call in is 860-665-8736. And seeing no phone calls and no one in the public here, we'll move on to standing committee information. We do have a report from our facilities committee from August 23rd, that meeting. Ms. Stam?
When we met on the 23rd, it was to review and prioritize the CIP through 2023. So basically what we did was we discussed what we felt were our priorities. We prioritized them and we discussed different aspects of different concerns that some of us had. So I know that at a later time we'll go through this, but what we did was we prioritized. And these are the priorities right now is Anna Reynolds renovation, new is one roof replacement district-wide. Two, the high school turf field is three in facilities, John Wallace Middle School. The wing configurations four preschool five bus garage six, John Patterson renovation to new seven, and Martin Kellogg Renate to new, that was eight, you're eight, right? We did that. So and then within the discussions, we talked about, and like anyone can pipe in that was at the meeting. For instance, you know, we're concerned like, you know, John Wallace has been hanging out there for a while, but we did do things to help, you know, move that forward. Like we have the crash bars and the panic buttons on the barriers. We talked about that kind of thing. And then we took a look at that meeting also, we all looked at the town hall, the reconfiguration and how it looked and just so that we all had a vision of what the size difference was as far as the rooms. You know, and we discussed the fact that there right now aren't any appropriations for fixtures, but that will come in the future and we'll discuss at another time. We talked about the fact that the transition academy was, you know, that was coming forward as far as the relocation for now and they're working on that. And I think that's it. Anything else that you guys can think that I missed? Emily or Bob, is that good?
That was fantastic.
Any other, any questions for the facilities committee from the rest of the board? Okay, seeing none. It looks like we don't have any student reps with us right now. I know that one had a conflict and hopefully the other will be able to make it. We can circle back to them if need be. So we'll move on to section E of our agenda and the first item is a report on the school opening 2018.
Well, Mother Nature decided she wanted to play a trick on us this year. So schools started with probably the most significant heat wave possible in 2018. But that did not impact school opening at all. We started on August 27th with convocation, which I know that several of the board members sitting around the table attended. And we tried to make it more of a celebration this year. So we greeted teachers with the Newington High School band that was composed of juniors and seniors who were already very proficient players, as well as a large cadre of students from elementary through high school, welcoming and greeting our teachers as they entered the building. And I think the teachers didn't know what to quite make of it at first, but they were very appreciative of it and enjoyed it. They then entered into the lobby of the high school where compliments of the Board of Ed. They enjoyed some refreshments. Convocation had, if you have not, or you'd want to see the band, you can go to Newington Public Schools' Facebook page and there you will see the video of the band playing and greeting the teachers as they arrived. We did hear from Mr. Schulman as our board chair. I think people wondered, he started his presentation with an analogy of staff and marriage. And I think they first thought, hmm, went off very well. Everyone was very receptive to it. We also heard from Mrs. Heidi Florian, the president of the NTA. I spoke for a very brief time. I think that was the hit that they actually were able to get out in an hour and 15 minutes versus their two-hour-plus convocation. And we concluded with lots of cheering and hooting and hollering as our teacher of the year was revealed and provided an awesome presentation to our staff. And that also is on Newington Public Schools' Facebook page. Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jen Fries, conducted a rap to a Vanilla Ice tune and it was called Teachers Rock Baby. And she had with her four of her students, and I see board members nodding. So if anyone would like to comment, please feel free to. School opening was wonderful. The central office administrative staff, myself, were at each of the schools to help greet students as they exited the bus. Principals, teachers were all there. It's always interesting to me, even having been a primary teacher, to watch kindergarteners enter school because they really don't yet know exactly what a line is. And taking off backpacks and finding the just right place in my cubby. It's the patience of a kindergarten teacher are amazing that first week of school. We did have tears by parents who were dropping off their kindergarteners for school. And that's always interesting because they just stand and whimper and they're trying not to cry when their child leaves, but they do. And so we managed all of our students and we managed all of our parents very well. Compliments to our transportation department this year. It was the smoothest that I can recall in the 19 years that I've been here. Every child was accounted for, buses ran in the morning very well, a little slower in the afternoon, but that's to be expected. Students are getting onto new buses and new bus routes, so that was a little bit slower, but it did not impact at all. The first enrollment this year, you have in your packet from the memo. We currently have a total of 4,012 students sitting in seats. And I want to be clear about understanding that because there is a difference. And I'm going to pause because our student rep arrived. Welcome. Mr. Fries, can you push her button so she can? Welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Dami Lola Killan. You guys can call me Dami and I am the junior Board of Ed rep.
Dami, is that what you said?
Yes.
Dami, well, welcome and thank you for joining us. What year are you at Newington High?
I'm a junior.
A junior.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Well, why don't we let you finish your report and we'll circle back for a board rep report.
So as I said, that there are 4,012 students who are sitting in seats in Newington Public Schools, but we do have other students who we are financially responsible for. And right now we have an estimated number of 153 students attending magnet schools. Again, we won't know the final number until October 1st when we get our bill from the magnet schools, telling us how many students they have. We also have 44 students who are currently on outplacement and that is outplacement that could be from us, from parents, from DCF, or from juvenile court. So that brings a total of financial responsibility to 4,209 students. So school opened, I think based on the smiles, the great energy of our students and our teachers, it's going to be a wonderful year. So I look forward to the year and I know that you'll hear lots of great things that are happening.
Questions from Mrs. Maraca on the start of school? I kind of chuckled when you talked about Mrs. Fries, not only because I saw it and it was amazing, but that because you said "a" Vanilla Ice song instead of "the" Vanilla Ice song? Because I believe there's only one. Any other comments from the board about the opening of school? Mrs. Guyen?
Well, just to say, yeah, Jen was awesome. She rapped the whole thing. It wasn't like she did a small segment. She made a whole new song and she was amazing. And it was, she dressed for it. It was amazing and the message was spectacular.
Mrs. Stam?
I want to piggyback on that. So I come from a family of educators and my brother was Connecticut State Teacher of the Year and he's now on the committee. So I sent this to my sister-in-law, who wasn't our teacher and my other sister-in-law. And I said, I go, but don't show it to my brother because he can't because he's on the committee. And they're like, no, we can because he unfortunately hurt himself this year and he's not on the committee this year because he's like recovering from a really bad knee thing. And they just all thought it was awesome and it was just inspiring and they thought it was cool, but it was really funny. I'm like, oh wait, I sent this, but you can't show my brother. And then the other thing, I just wanted to piggyback on the kindergartners crying. I have a niece who just sent her, my grandniece, to kindergarten. She just sent it all as a picture and like in poor little girl, she's like, I'm not crying, you're crying. It's like really funny because it was really cute. I'm not crying, you're crying. So that's it. But it was an awesome opening. So thanks.
Mr. Masol?
I just wanted to comment on the Sivatello's introduction that we had. That was a great job from a great family. So thank you again.
Mr. Branda?
So that was my first convocation and I don't know how you're going to top it next year. I feel bad for the next Teacher of the Year.
She'll be retired.
Right. So you won't have to, but the district will. Yeah, not your problem. So the next Teacher of the Year, good luck because that whole thing made me want to be a teacher. And just, I did not cry when I sent my kindergartner off. I was very happy because I worked from home, so I had the time. But just everybody at Patterson did a great job. You know, both kids came back so excited to go back the next day and until 7 o'clock in the morning. But it was a great first day.
Mrs. Dros?
I was not at convocation because I was at my own convocation. But Pamela, I just want to say, a lot of people have said like, how is Mrs. Maraca doing? And it is evidenced by a seamless beginning of the school year that you are doing a phenomenal job. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Mr. Tufel?
I just want to piggyback on what was said about the rap star that we have in our school system. I think she did one heck of a job and congratulations on your successful opening day, Pam.
Thanks, Bob. And we'll circle back to Dami. So Dami, as you know, once a month is your chance and the other student rep's chance to give a report. So this seems like a good time since your report essentially will be about the beginning of school anyway. So welcome. We're excited to have you and the mics are a little finicky. You have to be talking directly into them. And that's really, it's not for amplification really, it's for the cameras and for anyone watching at home. Thanks. Go ahead.
So I guess with the start of school, I'd like to first talk about the overwhelming support that was given from teachers and students on the first day. So as you all know, teachers went back on the 27th of August. And there were a variety of students from different clubs and sports that were lined up outside to greet their teachers as they walked into school and just like kind of start the year off right for them. And it was very heartwarming to see that because it's like students supporting their teachers and usually it's the other word. Well, usually you see students supporting other students and then teachers supporting the students, but it was nice to see that students took the chance to stand up and support their teachers. And students were decked out in Newington gear and they had pom-poms and they were just like cheering them on. And the marching band played uplifting songs and teachers were greeted with smiling faces and an opportunity to see former students. Then the teachers later returned on the first day of school and they kind of like paid it forward. So as students got off the bus, the teachers were lined up like on either side of the main entrance and they were just clapping for us and cheering us on and like the occasional high-five from the teacher. So it was really nice to see that. Very good way to start off the year. And yeah.
I don't have a question. I just want to welcome you and I'm just hoping you'll be here all the time and just, and please like be part of this committee in this venue. We want to hear from you and I hope you do that. And I'm just glad you're here. Thanks.
Okay, moving forward. The second item on our agenda is a report on gifts to schools for 2017, 2018. This is an annual report. It shows all of the gifts under $500 that were donated during the school year. As you can see, if you look through the list, it is very dominated by our PTOs and our PACs. Stop and shops on there a few times, Citizen. So that's, that's everything that came into the district under $500 last year and it's our annual report. Any questions on that? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for everyone's generosity this year, especially to our PACs and PTOs. They do an awful lot in our schools as you can tell by the very long list of things that they sponsored. Next up is a discussion on future agenda items for 2018, 2019. As we do at the beginning of every school year, there's a list of things that we have to talk about at the rest of our meetings throughout the year. By no means does that mean those will be the only things that actually get done. But it is a time for anyone to talk about the things they want on there. And of course, anyone who has a topic that they want to discuss at a board meeting, really all it takes is sending me an email and I can, I can work on getting that in at some point. Dami, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to add also, going back to the opening of the school year. We did, so what Ms. Tigno, the principal of NHS, decided to do was to, instead of doing Kindness Week, which is what we did last year where we kind of like, we encourage people to be kind to each other in different ways and random acts of kindness. But what we did this year is she started something that we called Kind NHS Week. So basically every week the students are given a challenge to promote kindness within the school. So the first week of school, we did the 3-2-1 challenge. So everyone was challenged to meet three new people, learn two fun facts about them, and then submit your name once on a raffle. And then like at the end of the week, there's a prize that's given out. So this week, our challenge was titled Sharing is Caring. And students and staff were asked to bring in canned foods and other non-perishable items to donate to the Newington Human Services. So it's kind of like not only promoting kindness within the school, but kindness around the town and like throughout. And also for the Student Council of NHS, we recently rediscovered the Constitution. And Matt Ford, who is the current Stuco president, he kind of like revamped the Stuco. So now what we have is we have a branch of Student Council, which is known as the Student Government Association. And the student body, so it's kind of like formed to mimic government in a way. So we have like the governing body and then we have two homeroom representatives from each homeroom to just like kind of give us an idea of like what each homeroom would like to see and what they want. And they help us in writing bills and they continue to help with school-wide events.
Great, thank you. Any further comments on the agenda items throughout this school year? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to item four on section E, the discussion of PTA, PTO, PAC meeting assignments. As you'll see, there's an attached chart that says where each of us is supposed to be throughout the school year. I will apologize to E. Green. I had no idea I was supposed to be there on September 4th and that seemingly happens every school year to me. Danielle's going to apologize to Chafy. So, and Emily is apologizing to Reynolds. Anyone else need to apologize? And Patterson for Paul. I don't know what happens, but the first meeting, we never get notified. It happened last year too and I think it was E. Green again and I apologized to Jim when I saw him. But they must know that we're assigned to them. There's got to be a way to figure it out that we don't miss it at the beginning of next school year, but...
I'll give Sophie a note to make sure that she notifies you via email.
You don't have a mic on, by the way?
This conversation. So in what you gave me last year, I was scheduled because I had it in my phone and the notification popped up and I had it written down weird. I'm like, I don't even know what that means. I ignored it. And then I was like, oh, it meant to go to Chafy, so.
Yeah, I don't, I remember this happening last year as well, but so sorry to all of those meetings that we missed.
I met my September commitment, just...
You made your September commitment?
Yeah.
Because you didn't have one. That's, that's very funny, Mr. Branda. So, but for the rest of the school year, October to June, please everyone make sure you go. I know Cindy said, and what happens is if you can't make one, Cindy sent out an email to a bunch of us to try to find someone to cover her October meeting, I think, because she can't make it. So that's what we try to do. So everyone is at a PTO and PAC meeting. They do appreciate it and it gives us a chance to learn about the incredible work that they're doing. So please try to do that. And Bob, you used to be on the Student Council meeting list. Do you still, you still get?
No.
No? Oh, Mike, you are now?
Yeah, so I'm the rep. And I talked with Matt over the summer. He actually sent me the new Constitution, or I don't know what he called it. It's pretty impressive actually. And tomorrow they're meeting, so I'm going to that in the morning. So I can report back if there's anything.
Excellent. Glad to hear that. Bob, did you have something else?
Yes. Last night I went to the Martin Kellogg PTA, PTO meeting. They went over the mastery with...
Mastery-based learning?
Yes, with the group of parents. And then we got into the normal meeting. And of course, like all the organizations in the PTA, PTO, they're looking for membership, participation. So I suggest to the parents that if you have the ability to get to a meeting, join the group and help out raising funds. And they asked one question that I could not answer, or maybe it can be answered now. They were talking about doing a like PayPal for some of the items, not only spiritware, but for some of their events, like the Washington trip where they can pay a payment each month or something like that. And they wanted to see if they could do it on PayPal. And I'm wondering if that's available to the PTO, PTAs.
That's a, that's a good question for, for our administration to get back to them on. My assumption is that anything that they would use that's out of the ordinary would have to have pretty serious protection for any data. But they'll certainly get back with a, with a formal response to them on that.
But overall, the meeting went well and...
Very good.
Pardon me?
Very good.
Yes. That's it?
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments on the, on the schedule for us to attend meetings throughout the year? Okay, now we will move on to discussion item five. It's a request from Newington High School to change the March conferences. And I will turn that over to Mrs. Maraca.
The state of Connecticut has now determined, actually this has been for four years, that the SAT is the state required assessment for 11th graders. We used to have the captain 10th grade and the state changed to SAT School Day for grade 11. What Newington High School has tried over the duration of the years that we've administered it is to have all juniors in the gymnasium at once while school goes on, or have only the juniors come to school and take the SAT. The latter is what has been most successful. So last year and then again for this year, our plan was to have it on one of the conference days. However, the state does not tell us the date of the SAT School Day until well after our calendar has been put into place. So Ms. Tigno, the high school principal, is requesting that the high school only move their conference days from the 20th and the 21st to the 27th and the 28th because SAT School Day is March 27th. So it will have less of an impact on instruction for students if on that half-day we administer the SAT as we did last year.
Questions regarding the high school's request? It seems eminently reasonable to me. The only thing I can think of is a parent who has a kid in the high school and middle school, does that impact anything? My thought is it just gives more time to be able to get to a conference. But Mrs. Guyen, you are in that situation?
Yeah, I have kids in both and I can't, it does not matter to me because their schedules change regularly anyway, so I don't have an impact.
I have two in the high school and one in the middle school and I can't see why that would be a problem.
Okay, great. That's enough parent, right? That's enough, that's a representative sample, right? But I don't, I don't, I don't have any issue with it. So it would be something that we would take action on two weeks from now. So obviously if anyone's listening and there are other issues that we're not thinking about with moving those conference dates, please let us know before our, our next meeting. We will next move on to discussion on our budget 2019, 2020 guidelines because yes, we start our school years by thinking about next year's budget. And I will turn that over to Mrs. Maraca.
Actually tomorrow afternoon will be the budget kickoff for our administrators and individuals responsible for budgeting and the guidelines we do share with them at that time. The areas of financial support that will continue are obviously in the curricular resources and materials because we have to make sure that we have what we need to instruct our students. In technology, it will be hardware and software. Again, in our one-to-one, it's renewing and moving it up through the grade levels as well as our maintenance matters that we have sometimes put on the back burner for other projects. New areas in need of financial support, and this was touched upon at the curriculum committee earlier, is going to be to look at the Aerospace and Engineering Academy. We do have one course running for the full year, but is that a program that now we want to fill out and complete as a full available courses for the school year? At the middle level, again, we talked this evening about the need for social workers, or at least something to help with social, emotional, and behavioral development for our students. We also have state mandates so far this year. They've been at a minimum, but we never know from year to year what they will ask us to do. And then the last will be, as Mr. Schulman explained to you, the board back in the spring, there is a preschool committee and that committee will be taking about the next 18 months. Mrs. Kraus is facilitating and sharing that committee. But again, looking at expanding preschool in terms of what we have right now, our preschool programs for students with special needs and typically developing children and just moving to a program that would allow more typically developing students to participate in preschool. So those are the new areas that you'll see. One other aspect that was changed, if you turn to the second page, item number 19. We often talk about breakage and what we're going to talk about as we move forward is that looking at estimating the breakage. So it's going to be representative of really those estimated costs for salaries that we may have to pay. Oftentimes we can't acquire a staff person in some of those very challenging areas, in science or in math or in the STEM areas, at the dollar amount that we use for a plans proposal. So this is just saying that we may have to in the future, look at what the position is and be able to adjust that so that breakage could be a little bit different than looking at it the way we have in the past.
Right. And for everyone who was on the board at this time last year, which is everyone except for Mike and Danielle, this is something that we talked about when we changed our budget guidelines. There were two things added at the end last year. One was to fund our... One was to fund our special ed outplacements as a gross number, as opposed to a net number, because there was some uncertainty at the state level how that would play out, and if we would get the reimbursement, if anyone remembers that conversation. That didn't come to pass, so that was removed from these numbers, because we don't have a need to do gross funding in our budget for that, and we, Dr. Collins' budget presentation didn't have that anyway. The other one, we did have this exact conversation about breakage, it was worded differently in a way that didn't really make any sense, so Mrs. Maraca adjusted it, but the intent is typically we would put in the plans proposals for any new positions, that would be $75,000 as a round number, it's something a little bit higher than that, and that's what it would typically cost to bring in a new teacher with salary and benefits. So, you think about certain positions, you can find brand-new teachers, and they can come right into your classroom, and, and that's fine, we have other positions, so this year we had openings at three positions for our academies. There's no way we could bring someone in at that $75,000 figure, it's going to be significantly higher than that, so it didn't make sense to take a retiring teacher's salary and budget so that only $75,000 would replace it if we knew reasonably well that it would be $95,000 salary and benefit. So this, this number just allows in the budget process that we're going to use realistic numbers for breakage, so in areas where a teacher's retiring, who, we can bring someone in making $50,000 less, that will be the number that goes in the budget book. In an area where we can't reasonably do that, there's no point in trying to pretend like we could, and that's not what we've done for the last couple of years anyway, so this just formalizes that. Do you have anything else to add on that? Are there questions on, on this? And for Mr. Branda and Mrs. Dros' knowledge, this is very similar, except for those couple changes, to what we do every year, the, the way that we craft our budget doesn't really change, we still have the same priorities of needing to make sure that we have successful students, covering our contractual costs, all of those types of things. Did you mention the new, the new unions, though? The new associations?
I did not, and thank you for that reminder.
They're in here, though, number 15.
Number 15. In the past, you've negotiated with the Newington Teachers Association, had to accommodate for those changes, and the agreement between the town of Newington, and asked me for the state's and city and municipal employees. Mr. Farisi, right now, and a team are in the process of negotiating with the Newington Association of School Administrators. They are forming a union, and as soon as we conclude that, we will open one up with our, what's going to be the local 818-64 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, who are non-certified administrators. They hold an 085 certification, and they too are forming a union, so you will have four total unions that you will have to consider as you process the budget and develop it, because that has implications for salaries and benefits.
Josh, sure. Mr. Vassell?
Mrs. Maraca, if you could maybe explain what or who that category of employees would be, because I don't think people understand when we say a certified, non-instructional person, so maybe a little explanation there, please.
Sure. So, a certified administrator is an administrator who holds an 092, and that would be someone such as your building principals, your assistant principals, our K-12 for program coordinators. It excludes Mrs. Kraus, Mr. Farisi, myself, and Mrs. Davis, but other than that, all of the instructional administrators who are responsible for teaching and learning would be part of that organization. In the 085, the non-instructional, are people like our Director of Techno, Information Technology, our Director of School Security, our Food Services, and our Assistant Business Manager, and I believe that's, that's it? That's it in that group?
Yeah, because I, I know that people had asked me, and I want to.
That was a great follow-up, thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments on the budget guidelines that have been presented? This will be something that we'll take action on to formalize the guidelines for the creation of the budget in two weeks as well. Okay. We'll move on to item number seven, which is a discussion on the Transition Academy, a release of purchase order. I'll just start by saying, if everyone recalls, at the end of last school year, Mr. Jackomol 's work to delay a multitude of different projects, and we've seen a list of what those looked like, in order to free up funds to be able to use for several different purposes, bus, bus and transportation, potential relocation costs, potentially Transition Academy costs, with their moving, FFNE, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the new town hall, if we need to provide new furniture in the building, and those were the major categories of funds that we tried to, to set aside, so that we would be able to do things for next school year. So, with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Jackomol to, to talk about the Transition Academy.
Okay. The Transition Academy, because of the town hall project, needing a space that's in the east wing, needs to be relocated off-site. Needs to be relocated off-site, more for safety, and just general convenience for the kids, more than for the adults. We just found trying to put it somewhere on-site here at the town hall property would have created too many problems and congestion issues, and also inherently created a potentially unsafe situation from traffic, not so much for the employees and for the people who are here all the time, but when we have visitors who are not familiar with the layout, layout and setup of all the area, and we have a number of kids in the areas that they won't be expecting to see, it just felt that it was just not the right place. So we, the town was able to use it, and a portion of the space over at the senior center, which is their, what they call their overflow parking lot, if you go straight across from the library and down that access road for the senior center, it'll cut back, and it's just a big parking lot area. So, the far side of that lot will be where the Transition Academy is going to be located. It is inherently a level site, so there are limited ADA and accessibility issues that are there. It is reasonably convenient to utility hookups, so they have the ability to put the permanency in place for toilets, electricity, phone service, things like that, which are really essential for a freestanding building, and it should work out well. It's a little bit smaller than we like, you know, the current size is 2,280 feet, and the academy did have the luxury of using the related spaces, they have hallway access, they have the gymnasium down a half-level lower, plus the HCD area for conferences or any other extended space they need. The new building is just about the same square footage, it just doesn't have access to the related spaces, so they will need to go over to the gymnasium at the senior center if they want to do any sort of exercising, physical therapy, and meetings, you know, we'll have to kind of see how that goes, once we're over there, to be able to know what the right fit is for supporting that operation. Right now, the tentative completion date is Monday, the 17th. The town is looking for us to try to be in for the following Monday, the 24th of the...
Is that right?
Yes, right. I haven't been over there for a few days to see if they're going to make that date. You know, we really are, you know, we probably have the next week to be able to get in there if the, the schedule slips a few days, but it's looking pretty good right now, you know, we'll be able to make, you know, within a few days of September 24th, if the 24th isn't achievable, so, all systems go right now. The money part of this, as Josh said earlier, $85,000 was earmarked for financial support to help the town defray the cost for putting up the temporary building, as far as all the good faith efforts have been made on this, so there's no reason not to turn those funds over to the town at this time.
Yeah, and, and, you know, this is something that we've kind of talked about, you know, to try and make things a little easier for the town, because they have been running into issues with there being money needed to support the town hall renovation project that just simply aren't available, based on cost and, and the amount of the bond, so this is one way that we can help out, and no way do we have to do that. It is using last year's funds and deferring some maintenance, which, you know, seems to be in line with, with our goals of, of being part of the town, helping them out, so, you know, that's, that's what releasing the purchase order to the town essentially does. It's a request from them, it's not unreasonable, unfortunately, it is, you know, funds need to get spent, based on the, the need to demolish this wing of the, that wing of the town hall in order to do the construction, and there just wasn't money in the bond for that, so. Questions, comments on the arrangement? Mr. Tufel?
We have one section of the trailer already, or the building here, one is the other section.
It was there when I was there, about three, four days ago. I haven't actually been over there this week, last time I was there was last Friday.
I was there Monday, and there's only one section.
Okay, so probably, I haven't talked to Dave in a couple days to know for sure, but it is scheduled to show up very soon. Thank you.
Mrs. Guyon?
How did this, is this, this was a request from the town for us to release the funds to them? I'm not sure if that's what you just said, or if it was just something that...
Mutual, you know, we knew, we had the money, you know, the commitment was made to purchase it, everything is in process, there's no reason to withhold it at this point.
Okay, that makes sense, I just wasn't clear.
Yep. Mr. Branda?
Is this something that we take action on tonight, or is that two weeks from now?
It's not something that we actually need to take action on, yeah?
Okay.
It's more informational than anything?
Can we drop down to the street?
I know, it's very loud. Maybe we just turn it off for the next half hour? Much better. Any further comment or question on releasing those funds to the town? Seeing none, we will continue moving on to an update on our transportation fleet location, item eight on our agenda. I can't remember, when was our, our last meeting was in August, and we discussed how the, the property up at Cedar Crest would simply not meet what the town needs for its transportation department, so we sent that to the town, the town then went back to the fire chief and the police chief with an alternative plan to maintain buses, some buses on, in the Garfield Street area, which was approved by police and fire, as we're all kind of aware of, that would be one-third Board of Ed usage, two-thirds town usage, up until the time when things are ready. We've been continuing as we have been with the majority of our buses at the high school site, and then the remainder of our buses still on the other portion of Garfield Street. One of the big issues that we were having was what to do with marching band if they couldn't practice in that front lot. The administration and the town worked together with Parks and Rec, and Mr. DeMayo, found an alternate solution, and painted football field lines on the softball field outfield behind the tennis courts, which I haven't heard is, is working out fine for marching band, and there were lights that have been put over there now, scaffolding's there. Mrs. Guyon?
The Parks and Rec Department has been fantastic about getting out there and mowing it and relining it for them on a regular basis, and the lights are up, and they were very bright the other night.
Excellent, I'm very happy to hear that. That was one of our biggest concerns about needing to get our buses off of that site, so fortunately we were able, able to, everyone was able to work together, find a creative solution, which Mr. DeMayo is known for, and get the marching band into a place where they can practice, so that is all well and good. And now we're, you know, this, what else did we want to chat about on that action item? Anything?
I think the only piece would be that we're going to maintain two locations, so again, we're maintaining the trailer and the portable bathrooms out at Newington High School, this fencing, et cetera. We will be able to still provide some maintenance to our fleet in the bays of the garage that's still on the south side of Garfield, and our employing parking lot would still be available to our employees that are going to be using the buses here, that will remain on that one-third of Garfield Street. The space actually will be about the same length as the original bus garage, it's 145 feet, the difference is it's going to be a little bit, I think, Lou, a little deeper of a lot, because now that it's been remediated, they've actually gotten a little more property in that backside of where the garage was, so.
And with this plan, we'd still be scattering maintenance and security vehicles throughout the district to clear out the rest of the space?
That's correct.
Mrs. Guyon?
In the last paragraph of this update, it says that Mr. Barnes is going to design the two sites, will there be changes to the high school site as well?
There will be some changes compared to what it looked like last year, possibly, so if people are expecting to see the exact same footprint, we're not sure it will, it's going to take the exact same space, but the footprint of what types of buses are there may change.
So there may be some full-size vehicles on Garfield Street because of the flow of, of where they're going out to, and what makes more sense route-wise, then, but the, the footprint of it will be the...
And buses will only exit to the Garfield-Willard intersection, they will not go east on Garfield to Main Street, they'll only stay at this end of the property.
All right, so at the high school, it may look, it may look a little bit different, but they're not taking more space there?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other board comment or question on the, where our buses actually are going? Mr. Vassell?
Just a question with the shared space, and I don't know if this is in, more for the memorandum time, or for now, stop me if I'm, what happens during construction when you've got a couple of rigs sitting there with steel or with supplies, and it is 2:10, and we need to get our buses out, and the construction material is in Garfield Street?
So, I'm smiling at Mr. Barnes, because he's probably going to be coming to the mic in just a few minutes. The plan is that, number one, our buses leave well before 2:10 to get to the high school, so they're not there.
So you're wrong.
So hopefully that won't happen, but it is my understanding, and I, I have a limited understanding, because we haven't really started the project yet, but they're going to be opening up Mazza Colley Way and Cedar Street, and that will be for the larger rigs to come through, so really, what you're going to see in Garfield are going to be maybe two trailers for Downs Construction, because they need to have their employees and staff on site, and then the rest of it's going to be lay-down space. There will be rigs going in and out, but until we see what happens, we really don't know, we know they're going to be back far enough, Paul, so our buses can continue to use Garfield for backing in and getting into the bays, but I don't know, Dean, Dean Barnes, our new Director of Transportation, if you have something more that you can share?
He says, yes? Yes, no, yes? Okay.
I have to push this button? You do.
It seems like when Mrs. Maraca's here, anyone who's new who comes into the room has to speak at the meeting.
Well, I'm welcome, as you folks know, and I have met some of you as the new Director of Transportation, it's been a month of learning and experience and growing, getting to know folks here, but the logistics of what we're going to be doing, as we have worked with Lou and the superintendent, is nothing that we can't handle, and looking at what we're going to be doing, the vehicles that we're going to be having on Garfield Street, we will position those to work with the construction company, and once they get set up, you know, our relationship with them, so that we can be out of their way, they can help us, it's just building that working relationship, and I don't see a problem with that at all.
Further board comment questions on, on this agenda item, and then obviously we have a connected one following this. Mrs. Dros?
I just want to say that I'm really impressed that we, like, stuck to our guns, and Pamela and the Director of Transportation, I don't know your name, ma'am, I'm so sorry, Dean, like, Mr. Barnes worked really hard in the best interest of our students and the safety of our students, and we didn't just jump at the cheapest decision or the easiest decision, we took our time, so I just want to say that, I'm like just full of compliments for you tonight, but I'm just very impressed, so, thank you.
Any further board, okay, seeing none, we will go on to a discussion of the memorandum of understanding for the Garfield Street property, so we're, we're kind of talking around this agreement, so first we'll say, in our board packet, there is one draft memorandum, that's the first draft from the town attorney, in the white folder, there is a white piece of paper that is the draft agreement from board councils. of paper that is the draft agreement from board councils. After board council reviewed it, and I'm not talking about myself in the third person, that's Tom Mooney from Shipman and Goodwin. The third memorandum is with, with two changes in the first and second paragraph, numbered paragraphs by the town council that they approved at their meeting last evening. So, you know, if we go over the timeline of this, the first, you know, this, I mean, MOU had been talked about for a long time, and it's something that the board thought we should have in our best interest, really with the main purpose being if the town is using any of the property on Garfield Street that the board has traditionally used for its transportation department, that after the construction project, the board will still have the ability to use that space for its transportation department so that we are not keeping our buses at the high school in perpetuity. And/or if there's another space for us to go to that we agree to, and that works out fine. In a letter that I sent out to the town council and mayor in July, I set out several bullet points that really hit those key elements of what we would need to see in an MOU. So the importance of the MOU is, is, is pretty serious. We need to have space for our transportation, and we can't keep the high school situation as it is forever. It doesn't work, it's not the best situation to have that much space at the high school used. It's not the best situation to have two separate locations for our transportation department. It's just, it's really not conducive to a smooth transportation department. So there, when we look through the three drafts, I'm going to try to go deliberately through them what some issues are and why it's going to be my advice to the board to not pass the one that the town council passed. So if we go back to March of 2018, there was a town council meeting where the town councilor said that they would use the space on Garfield Street that was being remediated for lay-down space and staging. And that was the first time anyone had heard that there was some kind of plan that the buses would not return to Garfield Street. Immediately thereafter, we alerted board council, who drafted an opinion letter. That's from Rich Mills on March 15th, 2018, that went to the town attorney and Kona. That laid out very clearly that the board in no way, shape, or form had relinquished control and possession of that site, that it was still a site that should be considered in use for educational purposes. Transportation is a legitimate reason to use property, and that the board, the only action that the board had taken very clearly said that we authorized the town to demolish the bus garage if it needed to, but in no way were we ceding control over that property. It actually says that in the motion that we made. After that, there was discussion from the town attorney that there was some kind of dispute over who controlled and maintained. In the town's opinion, it seems as if, if the buses aren't parked there, it's no longer for school use. If we fast forward to July 2018, again, my correspondence said very clearly, things like, a bullet point should be the board grants permission to the town to use that, whatever space they're using, meaning it's still under board control. And then at the end of the project, the board would get the property back to use for its buses if we didn't have anywhere else to go. The council's immediate response to that was that they would not agree to a term that said the board granted them permission, which sets off a red flag to me that if we're not granting permission, then it means they already think they have permission to use it, which is an issue in terms of control and ownership. The draft MOU, which is in our packet, has several portions of it that indicate the town, at least the town attorney, and, you know, enough to send it to the board, believes that the town still has, has ownership and control over that area and does not need board permission. Again, this raises serious red flags. The first part of it is in the second part of the, the number two paragraph that says that the Board of Ed and the town agree that Dominion is in dispute, and that this agreement doesn't constitute surrender of the property by either party. And although the town is currently in possession of the subject site, we're not relinquishing any interest. The fourth paragraph then makes clearer the intention that I see, that the town council wanted, or at least the town attorney's draft says, the town wants there to be an impartial third-party feasibility study to determine the cost-effectiveness of maintaining our bus fleet, which is the council's version of, maybe you shouldn't have this, which is something that is only in the purview of the Board of Ed. So those were two more red flags to me. I sent that draft off with Mrs. Marocca to board council in order, with, with two clear instructions to our council, please make sure that this agreement does not say we're surrendering control and possession, and please make sure that at the end of this arrangement, based on the language you put in the draft, that we will be able to put our buses back on that property without any issue. Very simple. Sent back the white page, which you all can, can sift through. It simplifies it. It takes out that fourth paragraph altogether about a feasibility study. It takes out the portion about there being some kind of dispute over who has possession over the property, and includes time-limiting language for, for the, in the paragraph one on the white page, for the period when the town needs lay-down space during the construction project, that's when the board will maintain its buses in that 145 feet. In the second paragraph, the town may use the remaining property, dot, 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 for the duration of the construction of, of the town hall. So what that does is the may is granting permission. The town may use it only during that time period. And it sets a time period so that afterwards, it is, it is clear that it is the board's. In the town's draft, and this gets fairly legalese, I apologize, it takes out the first sentence of that first numbered paragraph, which is the time-limiting portion of when we're going to maintain just 145 feet. That immediately causes some ambiguity because it's not time-limiting in terms of when we have 145 feet. That could be in perpetuity. The second portion takes out the may, the permissive part, and instead puts in will remain available to the town, which is fairly ambiguous language, and in my opinion certainly, allows for the opinion that it remains available during, during the staging. Well, what happens afterwards? Because there's no permission granted, and at that point, the town will have done the gravel work. There will have been no buses on there for multiple years. They would have done the demolition work as well. And there will be nothing in writing saying that the Board of Ed gets to put their buses back there at the end of the project. That creates a huge issue. I've talked to a couple of councilors about that. Last night before their meeting, I made very clear to one of them that it's not something I would ever recommend that the board sign. First of all, because it didn't come from council writing it. What I'm told is it was part of the, the leadership meeting and that someone just didn't like the word "may" because that could mean "may not." That's not how it's written. That's not how anyone would interpret that paragraph. So, you know, we're kind of at, certainly at a disagreement there. The council did unanimously vote to approve their version of those changes against what I said was something that was unacceptable, at least to me. And I was basically thinking probably the rest of the board once they heard the reason why. So that's a, a number of red flags as to why it won't be approved the way that we had it drafted, and what met our concerns and our needs. Because what I keep being told is that it's understood by everyone on the council side that the buses can go back there at the end of the project. And my response essentially is, well, then why not agree to language that says we're granting permission if you know we're getting it back? There's no reason not to, that I can see, other than trying to set up an argument two or three years from now that the buses can't come back here. That is, that is the long of it. Mr. Branda?
So when I first got here, I read over the town council's copy. I read over our draft, and I tried to kind of just think of the minor changes, or how it affects. And the, the two notes that I wrote without ever talking to Josh about it was, that first red cross-out is that it does appear to leave a window open for it to be used after the town hall needs. So I don't understand that, why we would agree to something that's very open-ended, and just allows them to, maybe they, after the, the lay-down space, maybe they need it for something else. The other point that I wrote down, I will say that I can understand where some councilors might say it's understood that the buses will just go back. But the reality is, by the time this project's done, not all of those councilors might be on the town council. So for it to be just like an understanding between us and not on paper, I might not be here, some of them might not be here. I just feel like that's the point of signing the contract, so that there's no open-endedness. And so those are my two concerns about it. I didn't have a concern about the, the second point, the may or the may not. I didn't really catch on to that. I understand your explanation. My main concern is that the timeframe and leaving that open to just not have them not there.
Mrs. Guyan?
I had a similar thought. Just in, in three years, it will be potentially a different council and a different Board of Ed, and we need to be good stewards to our, all of, all of the things involved in education, the buses being part of that. And if we don't take steps to ensure the protection of that at this time, they'll, there's nothing for people to fall back on in three years to say, hold on a minute, that's not what the agreement was. I think it needs to be very clear.
I, I completely agree. And, and different times, maybe different boards would choose differently. But since March, I, what, at least what I've laid out, are five different times the council has either said or taken some kind of action. That leads me to believe that there is a real reason to change the language and, and try to take over the land because there's a March 2018 meeting, there is an attorney response to our attorney, there is the response to my letter in July, there's the draft MOU, and there's the changes from yesterday. So that is far too much to say, yeah, we all understand the buses can go back there, without anything saying that the buses are going to be in certain place, and the town may have the other space just during their construction time. So, you know, that, that's it for me. Mrs. Stan?
I am concerned, and that, that was my red flag when we were going through this. I, I read it a couple of times before, and then it just, it's better when I hear it clarified like it did. And the first thing that came to mind was, we might not be here. All those, everyone that is making this decision right now may not be on the council or the board at the time. And you're right, we, this will not hold up. And we, and it does, it frustrates me because I feel like we've been trying to work so hard to be collaborative and work in collaboration, and, and do what we need to do to make things work. Like, you know, we didn't have enough money to, to move the transition academy, so we're doing that, and we, you know, all these things. And then we have things like this that muddy up the water and make us believe that it's really not going to be a clean, or an understanding that, yes, that land will be back to us. And then we'll be, you know, we'll be stuck needing to, to figure something else out in the future. And that's what, I'm really concerned about that. And I really am disheartened by the conflict that's happening right now.
Mrs. Guyan?
The point of the MOU is to lay out clear guidelines, right? So to leave it unclear like this is no good for either side. I think just making sure that it's very clear protects both sides from misunderstanding. It's in both our best interests.
Any other board comment? So there's an auxiliary issue related to not agreeing to an MOU as of right now. If any of you have passed by the site, in conjunction with all of these discussions that have been going on with the town about reaching an agreement on space sharing, the town has started to get gravel in and to do the work necessary to level it off and allow for staging to go in and for the buses to, to park again. And, you know, we've talked about needing certain electrical requirements in order, you know, to put things in. And without a clear agreement, I'm not sure that we can continue to allow the town to do that work on property that we're exerting control over for educational purposes, because doing so could lend to the, to the understanding by a court that the town is the one that's actually controlling and maintaining it as they're doing work on it, even though it's something that we are paying for in the long run. And I, I don't know the best way to do that because I don't want this to turn into some kind of huge fiasco. Obviously, the simple answer is for us to pass the language that we're okay with and ask the town council to do the same, and until they do so, to not do any other work on the site. If they refuse and then continue doing work, that turns into the fiasco. Board comment and concern on that issue? Mrs. Guyan?
So we've been talking for such a long time about this, and it has seemed that we're all on the same page a lot of times when we're talking about it. And then these things come up that seem not on the same page. We really do want to move forward. We definitely want to settle this. I would much rather be talking about almost anything else.
Anything, yep.
As I'm sure they would. So I, I mean, I would, I would love to be able to finish this up. And I, I'm confused as to why that this is even happening at this point. It's, it's frustrating because, yeah, I, I think none of us would like, there's nothing any one of us would like more than to move on from this. But I share your concern about them working on the property because they're laying a lot of groundwork for things that we've been trying to not have happen.
Mr. Visella?
Just for clarification, the, we have three documents in front of us. The document that we have labeled as E-9 attachment is, that is the memo of understanding, member of, member of understanding that we have put out through our attorneys as the proper...
Correct.
Correct, okay. Just want to make sure that that was a clear one. Thank you.
And I, I do want to say to the full board, this has all happened over the last, like, three and a half days, so, including a Jewish holiday. So apologies for not getting drafts out to you earlier of what was going on, but it was happening until last night. Mrs. Droes?
Thank you for explaining the legalese. It's very nice to have an expert on board to help us with that. So are we allowed at this point to say, and I don't know, because I know that doesn't say action, I don't know what we're allowed to. Are we allowed to say this is the one we, this is the one we agreed to tonight?
So we, we can't amend our agenda because it's a regularly scheduled meeting. If we suspend the rules, and then we can vote on, on it if that's what we want to do.
Because, you know, like everyone else said, and I've said it last year, and I say, and I'll say it again, and to piggyback on everyone else, I think that we've done a stellar job to have a good faith effort to work alongside the town council and know that we're all spending the taxpayers' money of this town. It's not, you know, a separate fund. And I've been, was corrected many times last year on that. So it does sadden me that I feel like we're being a little bullied. We're being kind of pushed around, and I don't think we should allow that. So I support this one, and I do acknowledge that you know what you're talking about. So I support that.
I, I know we do have a few council members in, in, in an effort to try to make this thing work. I don't know if anyone wants to, if Ms. Anis wants to speak for the majority and, and talk to us about, you know, just have a, have a little chat about what's going on. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for inviting me up here. I was down at TPZ, and I wanted to come up for this. What language do you want added that would make this work, that I could bring back to our caucus?
At this point, we, we just want the MOU that our attorney drafted.
Right. I know we're concerned about the may and will. If we're willing to incorporate language, that would stay that upon the completion of the town hall, that the buses can go back there. Would you be willing to let us keep the word, paragraph number, article number two, the remaining property in the north side of Garfield will remain? My concern is, at number one, you have the word minimum area instead of maximum area, which means you can always go further than 145 feet. You can go to 160, 170 feet. So that was my concern. I didn't bring that up. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can kind of compromise to get this moved forward.
That's actually Attorney Ancona's language, the minimum, the minimum area.
Okay, well, I, I was away on vacation. I apologize. And I came back to this. So I'm kind of getting thrown back into this as well. But what can... But what can we do that I can probably, to bring it back? And maybe you can amend it, and then amend it, pass it, saying that this will be valid only upon acceptance of the council. So this way, it's not going back and forth.
What, can you explain what the issue is in the second paragraph about the "may"? Because I simply don't follow what I've heard so far.
The "may," when you say "may," you're saying, yeah, you may use it, but you may not use it. We may decide that we need 170 feet and not 145 feet. With the "will," you're saying you will use it until, for the duration of the town hall project.
But isn't that the point of the, that is, I mean...
Well, I'm saying, I'm trying to compromise with you.
So that's an actual change, though, that our council made from "will" to "may," because it shows that there's board permission.
I understand that. But if we put language in there that you get the property back upon the completion of the project, why cannot, why can't we use the word "will"?
All I would say is that I would, I would have to ask our council to draft a, because it's certainly not something that I would, I would handwrite right now. I would not. So, I mean, I can, you know, everyone loves special meetings around here, so.
Yeah, we just love them. I mean, if you could give me the language that you want in there for...
And you want a "will" in there, and...
That's why, that's why we kind of, if you notice...
If we add a separate paragraph that says, upon the completion, which was one of the bullet points I had sent over originally, upon the completion, the board will be, the board will use all of the space on Garfield Street, it's traditionally used for its transportation purposes.
If you want to put that language in, if you notice, we did rewrite number two. We kind of moved the words around, so it doesn't say, we now say, the remaining property in the north side of Garfield Street will remain available to the town for staging. We moved some words around, if you noticed that.
Right, that's the, that's the big issue I have with it.
Well, we had an issue with a couple of things. So, I mean, we did, we took out the language that your attorney recommended about the dispute between the property. We took out the language regarding a feasibility study or cost-benefit analysis. I think we've made some concessions, and I really would like you guys to kind of, you know, we're here, we're trying to help, too. We want to move this along, believe me. We want to get the shovel on the ground, because the sooner we get the shovel on the ground, the sooner you can get your property back to put your buses, if we can't find a permanent location for them. So we're all trying for the same end game. It's just, we're kind of going with this, this one word, and I don't think we're going to have an issue about returning the property to you, because that's the intention. And it says it atop, "The board wishes to accommodate the town's needs without affecting the legal status of the subject property." That's why your attorney put that "whereas" in there, and I understand that.
And so now we're just trying to keep all of his language. And so I hear what you're saying. I think it's, since it doesn't seem that the council will ever pass the language as it is currently written, from our council, maybe it is a good idea for us to go back to council, ask them to add in a paragraph, if that is going to satisfy what we need to make sure that we get to go back to the area, and then we can figure out a time, we can call a special meeting, the council can do the same, and we can get this thing passed and move on. Mrs. Guyan.
I think I understand what you're saying, where we want clarity also. That "may" seems unclear to you, so if we can, we want to say that it's our property and that we're going to allow them to use it. So just making sure that, I can understand that piece of it.
Mr. Branda.
I think just to answer your question about what would we like to see, for me personally, I'm more interested in the timeline. I'm interested in that first, number one, that red cross-out, just having it understood, no matter who's on the council, no matter who's on the Board of Ed, in two and a half years or whatever, that once staging is done, the buses go back.
It's on. It's on.
It's broken.
Kind of. Kind of. Okay. And how, Ms. Anis, if we put a temporary kind of pause for a week on what's going on at the site right now, can you, can you just chat with the town manager? Because obviously, we don't want to hold up shovels in the ground, but we also don't want to put the board in a bad situation, which I'm sure you can understand, so if you can just chat with her about...
I can understand, but I know, I know we want to, she has the workers slated at this time to do the work. Maybe Mrs. Morocco and her can come to some agreement.
And maybe it can just be as simple as, as the town manager sending something that says, we know that there's some kind of dispute, and this is not something that we would, this is not something that the town considers to be exerting control, because it's something that's being done with the consent of the board. That would, that would probably be fine.
Yeah, only because we're working on the project at the library, and we have workers slated to do other stuff after this, so.
So if that, if that's something that could be done, I think that that would, that would, that would be fine with, with our council.
Okay, so you're looking to put the red line back in for number one?
Yes.
Which I don't think will be wrong, okay. And then...
And then add a four, that would say, at the completion of the, something like that, the completion of the project, all parties agree that the property being discussed will go back into the dominion of the Board of Ed. So that would just be something that I'll ask council if that is going to be sufficient to secure our interests, and as long as Tom drafts something and says that it's fine, I'm convinced the board will think that it's fine as well.
Okay, and will you concur that number two can stay as is?
That would be the, right, so as long as, so if number two stays how it is on your draft, does a fourth paragraph suit our needs, saying that it goes back to us at the end of the project? My guess is Attorney Mooney will say yes.
Do you think, do we need a time, like, within 60 days, 90 days, after the completion of the project, for us to get the trailers off of there? That was in the original draft, and then it was removed, because we thought it's not only just the construction of the town hall project, but the demolition of this facility. And so we didn't know, we had, I think, 60 days, and did not really know if 60 days would be sufficient time. So I think that was one of the issues, that timeframe, without knowing what it would take at the end of the project.
And so typically, anything like that would just follow reasonability. So once everything's like actually done, 60 days is probably the most reasonable time period. If it's six or eight months, that's probably...
Okay. We don't, do you want to include, when we talk about the town hall project, are we also talking about the demolition and the capping off of the police department and that type of thing?
I don't, I don't even know what that means, so.
Well, once the town hall is built, then we're going to demo the existing town hall, and they also have to cap off the police.
Essentially, it would have, it would continue until the, until things are done, and we can safely maneuver in and out. I mean, that's a logistical thing, too, right?
Yep, okay.
But I'm not sure we need anything in the actual...
I'm just gonna, does this sound reasonable? Right. Right, but does this sound reasonable, what we're, okay.
Okay.
I got three out of five here, so.
Right. I think that, from my perspective at least, and if the board has further comment, please, from my perspective, that, that kind of would cleanly clear this up. And what we'll do is tomorrow, we'll send out an email to board members to see when we're available for a special meeting. And Attorney Mooney and Attorney Mills are usually very responsive to any requests that we have. So we'll get it in motion tomorrow morning. As early as I would say, Monday, we could have a 10-minute special meeting for at least five board members. And then, and then you guys could...
Right, and once you get the draft from your council, if you can provide it to...
We'll, of course, send it over, make sure that you say it's fine, and then we'll, we'll move forward that way, and no one will vote on anything else until both sides are good with it.
Okay. I'm glad we were able to discuss this this evening. I appreciate you being asked to come to the table.
Yes, I really appreciate you being, any other board comment on all of this while we still have her at the table? Mrs. Stan?
I am glad that we're able to talk about it, because I was, I really want us to move forward. I want us to build this town hall. I want everyone to go forward with it. And I'm just glad we were able to talk it out and just, and come to some agreement, and hopefully, everyone else will agree with us, too. But that makes me feel better, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Guyan.
Agreed. I think it's hard when we do things here and you guys do things there, and then things get muddy in the middle, and intentions get lost as far as understanding. So being able to talk through it today is really helpful. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else from the board, we will move on to communications from board members serving as a liaison to agencies committees. Does anyone have anything fun to share? Mrs. Strohs, please turn on your microphone. One demerit.
I am, my microphone's, I'm a little out of, I haven't been doing this for a while. I did remember to go to the youth council meeting. It was on Rosh Hashanah, so I did have that conversation, so that won't happen again. So it's such a fantastic organization. You know, we come together in the best interest of the kids and putting things together. So I'm going to do a shout-out already for Hoopla. It's going to be on March 22nd this year, instead of later. So if you are listening, or you have kids in like fourth, fifth, sixth grade, it's a great event, and it does subsidize scholarships, and they did like a drug program for the kids, and they just do neat things. So talk it up amongst people you might know in that age level, because it's an awesome thing.
So does that mean the high schools musicals the week after that this year?
That is a fantastic question, and I believe it's actually two weeks after, but don't quote me on that. And hopefully, my daughter will be in it, so you can come with me.
Excellent. Excellent. Because I remember, I was on Youth and Ill Council for four years when I started, which was my favorite committee. And that was always a topic when they were setting the Hoopla date, was when the middle school and high school musicals were. Any other, Mrs. Strohs?
I know that they did look at all of that.
Okay, very, just want to double-check. Any further liaisons? Mr. Vassella.
I won't bring up anything that I've been liaising with. I think we've covered it all.
But you have been liaising with the Town Hall Rental Committee.
Right, that's what I meant, was I've been on phone with Mr. Harpy at countless phone calls.
Well, I appreciate your time there. Anyone else who's a liaison, seeing none. We will move on to item G on our agenda, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. And our phone number is 860-665-8736. And I'm just going to make a request that our future agendas, we had the numbers on there for a while, and they, they got off of there. I know that was a request from Mrs. Lyons a while back. No public and no phones. We will move on to remarks by board members. Mr. Vassella has no comment. Mrs. Stan? I will say, Dr. Braverman and Mr. Sylvia both emailed me this week that they had commitments through work. We thought Sharon would be able to be here a little earlier, but I guess not. Mr. Tufel? No comments? Mr. Branda? Mrs. Strohs? Mrs. Guyan?
Yes, yes, of course. We already talked a little bit about convocation. I wanted to say congratulations to Jen Freese. She's a phenomenal teacher. She's great to be around. She exudes enthusiasm for teaching and for students, and so she's a great representative for our town. So congratulations to her. And then this past week, I was able to go to the open house at Martin Kellogg, and it was just exciting to see all of the parents there. There was a number of students there that were helping out. They were giving like the two-minute warning when it was time to move on from each period that we were in. And I learned a lot of, my daughter has some very enthusiastic teachers, and I heard a lot of exciting things that they're going to be doing this year, and a lot about the retake policy, which is interesting. They talk about how they really just want the kids to learn the material. So I love hearing that, and we've talked about it so much in here, that to see it in practice is exciting. So I'm excited for the school year. That's it.
Thank you. I have two comments. The first, for the board's information, earlier this evening, myself and Mrs. Morocco both signed her contract as interim superintendent. So the copy of that will go out to the board tomorrow, probably. There was really no changes at all from what we discussed as a board at our last meeting, so that is all buttoned up, so that is great. The other related thing is that we have met, just for the public's consumption, we have met as a personnel search committee for the new superintendent. We have looked at the request for proposals that has gone out, that will go out shortly. It is similar to the one that was done nine years ago, when looking for a superintendent last. So that process is on its way, and as, you know, things actually start to happen, we'll have more formal, public kind of releases to update people about what's actually going on. And everyone did receive, I think, the timeline now, or is going to receive, going to receive a timeline for, really from now until the end of the school year, when hopefully, we have a nice transition period with whoever we find and is selected. All of the timelines for when everything's going to happen, when RFPs will come back, how they're selected, when they're selected, when communities, you know, how the community's involved, when they're involved, you know, nuts to bolts, everything that's going to go on throughout the search. That's something for the board to look for in their email soon, and make sure you look at it closely if you have any questions, comments, changes. Obviously, we can get in touch with each other and work on that to make sure that we're all on the same page as we start, start this process. Does anyone want a second chance, Emily, to speak?
I'm glad that it's signed and taken care of, and I'm thrilled to have you.
Yes, I think we all feel that way. Okay, seeing nothing else, I will call for a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Strohs and seconded by Mrs. Guyan. All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned at 8:24 PM. Thank you.